... United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation united in indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment, Siles. Thank you. Your call.
Percy.
Here.
Shipman.
Here.
Rechner.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Easter.
Here.
Approval, I need approval minutes of the Fire Department, Police Department, Treasure, Engineer, Code Office, Public Works, the Expansion Board, Redevelopment Authority, and the Planning Commission. The second?
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Any audience comment on any agenda items? That's the best right there. Nobody's here.
Here we are. Back there, hiding.
No, I meant CBG. I was looking for Jamie. Megan, you have the floor.
I'm next, alright.
Go ahead.
Business and Economic Development Committee is waiting for this collaboration with the North 120 Town IDA regarding that marketing project. Promotions Committee has ordered received promotional discount cards. It's a little blue card which will have discounts for 11 local restaurants in order to play the cupcake shop, the ice creams place, things like that. They will be for sale starting at River Festival and then for sale at the SRI office. They're also investigating, they're doing a downtown vacancy listing and investing in potential businesses to complement the city. The neighborhood committees, the Hill Neighborhood, held their garden boards and are wrapping up their, have wrapped up the REN grant, and they continue to plan Rainbow Workshops due to extra high demand. People have, well, they had a great response to the Rainbow Workshops. Old Time has member projects. I don't have any specific news from them. Membership is distributing welcome bags to all new members as well as to new businesses to the community such as Cowabunga's, Molyneux, or the insurance agency and a couple others. Riverfront Planning has two events coming up very quickly. There's a flyer up front for the Renaissance Festival, so if anybody wants information on the Renaissance Festival, it's there. There's also information on Facebook if you look up Lady Augusta Renaissance Festival, and we will be having some information on the radio as well, so just keep your ears out, and that is August 30th. There is an admission price, it's five for adults, three for children, and there will be a medieval feast afterwards. If anybody that really wants to get filled up in a costume and come eat a medieval time period feast, that is $40, it's $50 after the event. That'll be at 6:30. New Year's Eve, planning is ongoing for that as well. We've done a fan setup for that. Spark is also researching new projects to implement, and the key scent designation, that resubmission is in the final approvals of documents by the city and SRI. Finally, the Albright Council, the transfer, I'm not sure if I got to announce that at the last meeting, I think that was pending, but it has transferred. We're going to have a celebration very shortly next week, and the tax credit application has been recently moved to the study. Do you have any questions, please? I am going to turn.
See, there was some work going on today at the Albright?
Yes, they're cleaning. Trying to do removal of anything that is involved in use.
On the outside? Or with, I've seen scabs and that's why I'm asking.
Yes, and they're doing some repointing work. And they will be doing some repointing work in a couple months.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
And maybe, John, I'm not sure, should council get involved with this first initial initiative that we might be able to help with or not, as far as this grant for the town? Can we let me talk to the town?
We may need to talk about that. I would like to wait one more month to see what happens there. I know that the Business and Economic Development Committee is working on that. They meet next week, and if we can't get something resolved, then I think they need to work. I think we're all right for right now.
Alright, thank you.
I want to talk about River Festival. After 10 months, we're finally here. It's been a long 10 months. How about it, Brad? That's right. River Festival starts Thursday evening at Shaqomi High School with the Dallas Godot Town. We have 16 outstanding people from this community or surrounding communities. We have four judges. We have Ellen Boyer from Shikman High School Drama. We have Francis Garcia from the Daily. We have Tom Webb from Spyglass and Service Selector, and we have Valerie Tersani from WVR. There are judges this year. They show a charging $2 admission donation type thing. Every dollar going to the Chief Shaqomi Backpack Program, so that's a very good program. They hand out about 400 backpacks a weekend, school session. That goes to kids to take home so they have food to eat over the weekend. And then we go to Friday. Friday, the vendors start coming in, close Front Street. We have over 100 vendors. I think we're pretty close to 110 actually, right now, and the rest we can go. Food and crafts, so they'll be setting up all throughout the day. The entertainment starts at 3 with Valley, 107.3. And then I have Eric Rockow coming at 5. Then we have Frank Wicker at 6. Then we have Hyper Ice at 8:30. So a lot of it will be done online, so there's no noise ordinance. Flattening, one hour apart, Brad. Saturday, we start at 9 o'clock with Yoga on the River, and we got poetry reading, we got Taekwondo, we got the African drums, we got Brianna's husband doing jokes, we have a balloon tying guy throughout the whole day. We got the Animal Adventure. Of course, we have all the craft and the food vendors down throughout the whole way. We have entertainment all day long at all three stages. We have some returning people like Michael Wagner, Chrissy Klein. New this year, we have Runway Stroller. I just can't think of all of them. I'm sorry to bring the paper with me. And then Saturday night, we're going to do something new, and of course, it's our 25th anniversary, so throughout the Friday and Saturday, we're going to have free giveaways, carnations, and mugs. And the mug will be a coupon for a free drink and a vendor, soda, water, lemonade, and carnation. So it's basically the first 500, take a mug on Friday, the first 500, take a carnation on Saturday. And then for the 25th anniversary, new this year, we're doing River Festival after hours, which starts at 7:30. We're going to have a Def Leppard tribute band down along the river from basically 7:30, they should be all done by 11 also, Brad. There will be some food vendors down there and some adult beverage. I think that's everything for River Festival.
Sounds like you've been busy.
We have been busy as a committee. The committee can't thank them enough, they did a lot of work. Sponsors, without sponsors, that's not happening. But, you know, thank you. Terry Wade Briana is one of the committee members, one of the co-chairs actually. So, yeah, we've put a lot of time in, 10 months worth for this weekend, and actually the weather's beautiful.
I was just going to say, I checked the relative气温, it said 0% chance of rain.
Yeah, so it's 76 degrees, low humidity. So everybody comes to River Festival this weekend, it'll be a great time. Hey.
Boat Regatta?
Cardboard, I'm sorry, I missed that. Cardboard Boat Regatta, the Animal Adventure. Can't forget cardboard boat. Thank you.
And I'll put my plug in there. If anybody is interested in participating in the Cardboard Boat Regatta, it's not too late, you can still build a boat, cause your friends, kids, coworkers, anybody. It's a really fun event, it's a whole different perspective of being on the water, and it always gets a little less, but all of the building materials and directions are all the same.
And also, I wanted to bring up, WVR is going to arrive with a boat Wednesday morning down the gazebo where you go over Little Wall. We're bringing in a couple old cars from Zeromains at Summery Motors, just, you know, so we have, so car cruise in, which goes on Saturday all day. Last year, we drove 200 cars. So WVR is going to be there Friday morning, 5 to 7. Anybody wants to come out and watch and be a part of the crowd, wave and carry on. We're going to have one of the people from the Dallas Godot Town up there. Two little girls are going to do this little act, that's really cute.
It's for nieces.
Your nieces, Harrison? I called their mother and I said, "Can I get a girl?" And we're going to have, I'd really like to get a cardboard boat built so we can sink that girl in the river, because she was telling all the fun things she does. I think that'd be fun, so I'm trying to get a box to put her in. But that's Wednesday morning at 5 o'clock in the morning. Alright? Thank you.
So, you know, I have, I have extra guys coming out Friday night and Saturday, so.
Great, thank you guys. I do have, I did get some fireplace, we do have fireplace for Friday and Saturday, but it's nice to have the aqua trough and stuff. Thank you.
It's like they're not going to get any boats though, no cardboard boats to go. We finally got them all back to work, nobody's hurt right now, so we're not putting anybody in the water.
How about Brian, just providing them?
Alright.
Better be a big boat. Well, we're going to go, big old liners.
I did want to mention before I give you the authority, the few people that were at the National Night Out last weekend was a huge success, and I see Connie and White are back here, and again, we thank you very much for everything that you do and you have done in the years to build it up. I remember when that started, with I think two tables, and I'm not sure there was anything on the second table, I think it was just two tables sitting there, so that's grown hu, I don't know how many people, we estimate were there, but there was a lot of people there, so I think probably the biggest one we ever had, so you don't have to send us a thank you letter or card, Bonnie, we appreciate that, but it wouldn't be for you guys, we wouldn't be where we're at now, so thank you again for everything that you do. It was a huge success, a lot of information passed around, a lot of things got accomplished, so again, thank you for that. If you get a chance.
I think this is from last year, I can hear it, she's retiring this year.
She did say she's retiring, I don't know if we have that writing in on the afternoon or whatever.
That is official.
That's official.
We think we're everything we got in the cards.
No problem. I'm sure if we need you around, just to give us a quote for some ideas for next year, or you could probably give us some nominations or some recommendations, I should say.
Well, I told him to keep going away. He's calm as stone.
Okay, well, I'm sure he'll find something. We just need to get somebody to be in charge, okay? There's a, I got a letter up here from a Mr. Simpson who owns a property on 314 Vine Street. This is another one of our projects, our Homeowners Rehab, and I just wanted to read this letter. I would like to thank you and the City of Sundbury, NC, to call for repairing my property, the professional people that did it, concerned and explained the situation, repaired the problem the day or soon after. I have no concerns about the work they did, professional and timely manner. If you get a chance to walk over to the end of Vine Street, there's a picture there of the house before it was fixed up and after, and that's just another success story in the city and how we're taking those properties one by one in various ways to get to the companies. Again, this was the Homeowners Rehab project, which I'm sure that list is already full, but they're moving forward on that, and that's, again, it's just another successful program. Redevelopment Authority.
Speaking of properties, we have one property that needs to be presented to be declared a public nuisance. I have a resolution that I'd ask the council to pass, again, as the Board of Health declaring 618 North Fifth Street as a public nuisance. That property will have 10 days, or the owners will have 10 days to bring it up to code or work with the code office to get a plan.
Need a motion?
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Easter? Percy?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Demolition bid, Jim?
Yes, for 139141 Church Street. We have a quote from Schlegel's out of Millmott. The total price was $19,428. We have a quote from Dusick, off Dusick out of Schmoken, $15,812. And we have one from Steinbacher, and that would be $13,670. Steinbacher's is the low quote, low bid for the demolition of 139141 Church Street. I'd like to make that form a motion.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
Percy?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Your timing or not, Jim, or what's that going to be?
Everything that's been here, it's going to start within 30 days.
I think it has to be done by the end of September because of the money that's being used.
New business. New business, Penn Dot Road enclosure, Dale?
Yeah, Shikmanmi Soccer Program is going to do a color run. It's going to include some of Market Street and stuff. They don't have the official round total done yet, but being a student on 61, we're going to need to get the motion approved.
I don't really know what a color run is, is that a five mile?
Could you just explain to me, and reenact it?
Oh, I should have been paying attention.
It's a, usually it's a 5K, and what's really fun about it is, instead of just running a normal route, you come prepared to be colored, and what happens is you wear as much white as possible or light colored clothing, and you are given little containers of colored cornstarch, and they come in all different colors of the rainbow, and the crowd is usually given some. The runners are, as you run, you throw these cornstarch pouches at runners, like water balloons basically, and they're thrown at you, and you go through different phases, and basically the goal of the run is to get as colorful as possible, but again, and you look tie-dye from top to bottom, and it's a lot of fun being a big kid, and then you can either wash it out of your clothing, or they'll give you instructions on how to basically set it in so that you have tie-dye clothing. Highly recommend it. If you don't want to participate in it, at least come out and see it, because it really is a hoop, it's a lot of fun to see.
We'll try to get that announcement where it's actually running to or from, or whatever.
Starts at the high school.
Okay.
Abandoned vehicles, I just want to report that out of the 55 that we tugged, I guess it's...
I'm in, I'm sorry, I'm in motion.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
The abandoned vehicles, there was 55 vehicles that we tugged, 45 have been removed, there's 10 left, and Chief Harris is going to personally take care of them on Wednesday, so if you're sitting in this room and you're one of the 10 that's left, I'll ask you for about the fourth time, please remove your vehicle, because we're going to move them for you. That's a pretty good turnout, I think, though, for 55 of them, 45 of them removed, so I appreciate all the assistance that the public has given us on that, and again, make our neighborhoods a little nicer. Unnamed alleys, Dale?
Yes, you guys should know, I have a list in front of you, if you'd like to go, where there is some alleys that haven't started that aren't named in this state, we've added some to it. I guess I'm looking for your blessings, if we can go ahead and change something, get them named. If you know of any, let me know. The young lady here, what you said about the brush two weeks ago, up, not, up, back there, that alley isn't named either, so we're going to put that on the list, and we're going to call that Baldy Street.
Oh, that, yeah, that actually is.
There's still alleys coming in that we aren't getting names on, or that we'd like to get named, so some of these were done prior to me, but I just want to make reference to number five, between Warrenton and East Chestnut, it says Henry's Alley, it has no association with me, I don't know who it is, so I have nothing to do. Okay, yeah, I just, that's Alaska, so I don't want anybody to think that we're doing anything here. But, yeah, that's my goal, so I don't know, do I need a motion to be, go ahead and start these, or do they have any questions?
What do you do with the ones that say "or"? Just pick one, or what?
Yeah, well, like Mike Kirsten, everybody knows Mike does Santa Claus, you know, so it's either Kirsten or Alley or Santa Lane, I like Santa Lane, so, different things like that. There's one on there for bidding, you know, I think deep bidding streets sound better than alley, but when Terry Allen did it, we put both on here, in case anybody had any questions.
Is there anybody actually lives on any of these, any of those?
Yeah. And actually, with the new 911 system, if somebody would build one there, even if it's a garage, you have to have an address. Even, like, even on railroad tracks, they have these little power boxes, they actually have your address. It's required.
Are you planning on making street signs for all of you?
Yes.
I guess you want to shorten some of them up, okay.
Yeah, so, I don't know, we need to have to make a formal motion, just let you guys know we're doing this, or we're doing this. Do I make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I do, make a motion, we have to start naming the unnamed alleys and streets.
I'll second it.
Well, if you take care of Tom's Alley or Warm-Up Alley, then at least you have one name for all of them. You want Tom's Alley or Warm-Up Alley?
Yeah.
Alley across from Ted Avenue, that I know where Ted's house is. I'm not sure what alley's talking about.
Kevin Chitney, that's up there.
It's the, I think it's the alley between Ridge Avenue and Worthing Avenue that comes out with Ted Avenue into Lovewood Sett. Comes off the Line Street.
That runs always the line? Yeah. No name on that now?
No, I'm sure.
There's a lot of little streets, I believe that's one that you don't have names for, so.
I don't know who Tom is, how about, what do you want, Warm-Up Alley?
He's the one up in the alley.
Oh.
Face lines.
We're going to try to make a little appropriate.
Who made a motion?
I did.
Dale, second?
Yes. Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yeah.
Easter?
Yes.
Resolution, motor vehicle, speed, timing, equipment, what this is. What we're trying to do is support a resolution that's in the House right now in the Senate, pretty much to allow municipalities to use the, I imagine the same type of guns as state police.
It's radar guns, it's fun to start a push through, so just trying to get support from all the municipalities, the Senate, all the legislatures.
I sincerely doubt personally it will ever pass, but it's a good start for us to support, so all I'm asking you guys is to support our resolution of House Bill 1340 and for House Bill 1272 and Senate Bill 1340, enabling all municipal police to use the same motor vehicle speed timing equipment as a Pennsylvania state police. And I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
Henry?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Shipman?
No.
Rechner?
Yes.
Proving of paying invoices, John?
Okay, before we approve the invoices, just like to remind everybody that we are 58% into the budget at this point. As a city, we are about 7% over budget, some of that's because we have prepaid some expenses. For instance, we prepaid the police pension for the year and some, most of our insurances for the year. Nevertheless, we need to be conscious of the fact that we are close on the budget and we might to be on budget. Kind of mind, we have $109,931 and 12 cents of regular invoices to pay, and $14,856.39 of liquid fuel invoices to pay, I make a motion that we pay those invoices.
Easter?
Yes.
Percy?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Audience comment?
Did you, do you have something on your, though?
I did, I said there was only 10 left, I was 55. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Please.
A couple comments. Dale, on those alleys, streets, whatever you want to call them, I had heard some time ago, maybe two, three years ago, the street that's named behind Catalissa Avenue, like you're going towards, 4th Street, that direction? That Catwaller?
Catwaller.
Like this big?
Catwaller.
Thank you. That is not the correct name of that street, and somebody who is going to check on that and change it?
My wife will argue about that.
Yeah.
My wife's done a lot of research on that, and that's the name of it.
There's a number of people that said that that was not correct.
I was told by a real fire chief before he passed away, that it was a party death, and he swirled down, that's what it was, in 2014.
I don't know, I can't say yes or no about, I'm just, the conversation of different people putting that forward.
Right, well, can you give me some time to research it?
Sure.
I'm not going to say by next week, but see what we can do.
Sure, sure. And then the problem street behind me, which is North Second Street, that does not have a sign either. You know, the flooded alley as they call it, that should technically be North Second Street, and there's no signage there, and there are people that live on that street, and their address is considered rear of Edison Avenue.
Is it named Second Street now? I don't know.
There's no sign there.
Block, hundred block.
But, but you can see how the extension is.
He's right.
Yes, we'll get a sign, Mike, get a sign. Now, it might not be close to, because coming off there behind the rescues, they got their parking lot, with the trucks come, so it might be somewhere up further, so you're aware of that, you don't want their truck around all the time.
Right, or maybe you can put it across the street, like signage does, on the opposite side of Packer Street there.
Is that where that starts at Packer and goes up?
Correct.
Okay, so that's North Second Street, the extension.
Correct.
Now, it might not be close to, because coming off there behind the rescues, they got their parking lot, with the trucks come, so it might be somewhere up further, so you're aware of that, you don't want their truck around all the time.
Right, or maybe you can put it across the street, like signage does, on the opposite side of Packer Street there.
Is that where that starts at Packer and goes up?
Correct.
Okay, so that's North Second Street, the extension.
Correct. And on this timing thing, Brad, you're probably already aware of this, but when people fly across Packer Street there at Edison, you could, you could be rich, because they bottom out there, they just get the propulsion, by the time they cross over.
Not for made money, it's more for easier access.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, it's that many people that you see pulling right across there.
You know, I just, when I first took office, I thought that would be a good way to make money, but the city only gets, what, $12.50 a city?
It depends on the fine.
And if you go take some money and borrow it and offer it in overtime?
Right.
We lose money. But from an enforcement standpoint, it's a good thing.
Yeah, you can see that, you know, once they bottom out, when they hit the other side, how slow they go.
The state called on them with that too, because they just changed one of the laws for obedience. You should try to get people break, because it's a non-point violation, and it's a $25 fine. The state says, "Believe me, we're getting too many of these coming in," so they took the fine from $25 to $150. It's still a non-point violation, but you're paying them.
Okay, you done, John?
Yes. Yes, I was wondering, in the Celotex site, they are dumping ground, dump, truck after dump truck of ground. Today, it was pretty greasy, and the dust was absolutely terrible. Is there any way to control the dust, or can anything be done that we don't have to eat all that dust?
I wasn't there, I don't know, we'll take note of it, that news, when they bring the trucks in, it causes some dust, and where was the dust going to? Your house?
It was blowing all around, depending which way the wind went, which way the dust went. And there was quite a few trucks loads, I don't know, Mr. Shipman told me that he thought it was coming from the landfill, but boy, there must be a lot of ground being dumped, because we are getting a lot of ground up there.
As far as the dust, we'll, yeah, we'll try to find who's hauling it, maybe they can go away to town.
It's Penn State that's coming from Transfer Station, and I don't know if they're still hauling from the project that they're doing out by the Silo. I seen, I seen a load do a leak last week.
Really dusty?
Yeah, very dusty, but from the, the, um. The soap, not by some wall, we're putting a drain in, and it's, it took a load out last week.
Whoever was dumping today, it was really, really dusty tonight.
Okay, yeah, they'll say a look at that. It's coming from one side, there's, there's too many trucks. Okay. Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Mike Outrich, I'm the pastor at River of Life Assembly of God Church on Second Street. And we just want to, on, on August twenty-third, on Saturday, from nine to eleven, we wanna show our appreciation to any first responder in the city and their family. The fire department, the, the police department, the E M P workers. We are gonna serve them breakfast, and we would also like to invite council to come, the mayor and council to come, and show their appreciation as well for the sacrifice that they make on a daily basis. Ruining, putting their lives on the line for the safety of people of Sundberg. So that's Saturday to twenty-third, nine to eleven.
Do you need any help?
Thank you, sir. Do we need any help? Sure.
Never say no.
No, you never, you never turn to help.
Nine o'clock Saturday morning, right?
Nine o'clock, nine to eleven Saturday morning, August twenty-third.
Where are your eggs, Greg?
Uh, some, uh, River of Life, Assembly of God on Second Street in Sundberg.
Thank you very much. I know for a fact I'll be in Boston that day, so I will not be able to attend.
Want us to save you a plate?
Since he can't make it, I. Yes, ma'am.
I've addressed this situation with Mike many times, but there are some alleys in Sundbury that are extremely bad. There's a lot of potholes. And he said that the city does not have a lot of money to take care of these alleys. Come this winter, we're gonna lose our cars in some of these potholes, but they're really gonna get a lot bigger. For instance, Woodlon Avenue between Third and Fourth, parts of Center Street. Some of these Shorey Alley, they're terrible. Is there any way that we can get these patched or fixed or something done?
In all honesty, yes, that, what they're saying is, we have very little bit of money. We have some committed for a church street project. We're looking at updating four red lights in the city. Who was it called, Terracan? Which was seventy thousand dollars for all that. And after this year, with all the line painting that we did, we're coming in close to fifteen thousand dollars just in the paint. So we don't have a lot of money left over right now. I've discussed with Mike, we're looking at some of the smaller streets, maybe moving ourselves, but maybe a little.
Shorey Alley is really bad mainly because they get a lot of business from Ford Motor Company, which goes back along there. And, you know, the only way you can go into Swineford Bank, you have to go out that way, and you have to go either one way or the other. And it's terrible.
This, this, Mike, we had an estimate to do Packer Street from front to fourth, Mike. The cheapest, cheapest route was a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars, and to do it properly, it was three hundred and seventy thousand. So they're not, it's not a cheap fix. And commend Jim on this, that if we do any major streets, we'll talk to the municipal third again, see if they're ready to do any major, on their infrastructure. Cause now is the time to do that too. Next year, we'll get our allotment, see what we can do.
Maybe we'll just, when we get that next year deal, just think about, I agree with you, and it's not just that, August fifteenth.
Oh, I agree with you.
Maybe we should just take it here, and just instead of doing the streets, try to see all the alleys we can, at least prioritize the worst ones, that type of thing. Put a plan together, maybe a two-year plan or something to address them. Cause we all have it behind our houses, we all have, I know what you're talking about, and find the same thing that.
Especially when they're traveled every day.
Yeah.
I mean, you should load the street near behind the friendship, it's probably got a six inch dip, raised behind the fire.
Yeah, I remember this past winter was the worst winter we've had in twenty years, so it didn't help anything at all, that's for sure.
And just a load of coal, coal pack, what's that cost, for one T tack? And that doesn't fill a lot of quarters. So, yeah, no, just we're honestly trying, we're, we're, we're taking two or three help just to add to that.
Fit, fit your gun.
All those streets are already studied now before you put pavement on, so we do something with the water. Because if that, if you have bad drainage, they don't last long.